Yes.
Yes.
The March 24th, 2022, Meeting of the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole will now begin.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, March 24th, 2022. For the record, my name is Anisha Marwa, and I am the Acting Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local health pandemic. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll to verify a presence of the quorum?
Commissioner Alper. Commissioner Alper, I think you're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxley said he wouldn't be here this evening. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Faola. Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Marwa.
Here.
Commissioner McGuire.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Rainville.
Here.
Seven members present.
Let the record reflect, a quorum is present. And with that, we will move to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs minneapolis mn.gov. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Ford.
I move that we adopt the agenda, adopt the agenda.
Is there a second? Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? With that, I will ask the clerk to call, oh, sorry, is there any discussion? Just trying to fly through this, I apologize. No discussion? With that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Alper.
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell.
Hi.
Commissioner Faola. My apologies. Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainville.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Seven yays and zero nays.
That motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 10th, 2022. May I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner McGuire.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ford.
Second.
Great. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Alper.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Faola. Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainville.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Seven yays and zero nays.
Great. And moving on, we'll go, we have just one discussion item on our agenda this evening. 5009 Beard Avenue South, the staff is Peter Crandall.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior Planner with Seapad Land Use. I'm going to share my screen here and speak primarily from the materials that were a part of the Cow package. I know that the applicant is also here this evening and may have some updated information, but we'll start here. So the project before you is located at 5009 50th Street West, or sorry, Beard Avenue South, at the intersection of 50th Street West. The site, as you can see here, is about nine blocks outside of the 50th and France Commercial District. 50th Street West in this location is a goods and services corridor in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Some more context images provided by the applicant show that the site is currently occupied by church building with an associated surface parking lot. These are some images of that existing church. Again, it has frontage on 50th Street and Beard Avenue South. There is an associated daycare use currently in the church building as well. As far as the land use guidance goes on the site, in 2040, the site is guided for urban neighborhood and the corridor for built form overlay district. And again, highlighting that 50th Street is a goods and services corridor in this location. The applicant has kind of pointed out some of the existing land uses on the site and then the existing transit service on 50th Street. And then these are some images of the surrounding context. There's a kind of a predominance of single into family homes in the neighborhood immediately to the south of the site, and then some associated small-scale residential serving commercial uses along 50th Street West. The closest kind of medium to larger scale use to the site would be this assisted living facility that's located immediately across 50th Street, which is a four-story structure. And then a survey showing the location of that existing church and existing surface parking lot on the site. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure on the site in order to construct a new five-story mixed-use building with 61 dwelling units and approximately 1,500 square feet of commercial space. This is the ground floor plan, floor plan that shows you the organization of those proposed uses at grade. The applicant's proposing to locate the commercial use at the corner of the alley intersection in 50th Street West, fronting along that goods and services corridor, and then concentrating residential amenity space on principal entrance for the proposed residential use at the corner with some walk-up residential uses fronting along Beard Avenue South. I'll point out here that because the property is residentially zoned, it is subject to setback requirements of the corridor for district. In this case, the applicant is proposing to comply with those setbacks along the two public right-of-way facing elevations. So at 50th Street West, the required setback would be 12 feet per the zoning ordinance. And because the lot is a reverse corner, given that there's a front yard here, it's established to whatever the setback of that house is. And as far as I can tell from what's been submitted, the applicant is proposing to respect that established front yard, I'll let them confirm that. And then along Beard Avenue South, there is another associated established setback to 20 feet for the adjacent property to the south. So the applicant is complying with those two yard requirements. They are requesting a variance to the rear yard requirement along the alley. So that would be nine feet per the zoning ordinance. And the applicant is proposing a setback of five feet and one inch in that location. They are proposing one level of below-grade parking, which should be accessed via the alleyway here at the south end of the site. And then some at-grade enclosed parking as well for what I believe is a total of 65 spaces. Yeah, 65 enclosed parking spaces. And again, it's a 61-unit building. So that's that one level of below-grade parking. And then you can see via the floor plans of the upper stories that the building does step back a little bit from that five-foot setback at the grade level, particularly at the south end of the proposed building here, so that the upper levels facing the rear are further from the property line than the at-grade enclosed parking. There would be a small amenity patio on the roof. The fifth floor is setback somewhat along the two public right-of-way facing elevations. And then some elevations of the proposed design. I think there may be updates on these from the applicant's team, but primary exterior materials would be brick, metal panel. And then you can see two things that were pointed out in the memo pertaining to the at-grade enclosed parking along the rear and along the south were some blank walls that wouldn't comply with Site Plan Review Standards. So I think the applicant's going to address that. And then along the Beard Avenue South facing elevation, you can see these walk-up units here. And this kind of illustrates that there is an associated grade change as you move away from 50th Street West. So those units start to have kind of a retaining wall along that front elevation and then along the south side yard as well. And then a section kind of showing that setback of that upper fifth floor and the garage as well, garage access. Some additional images showing the elevations of the proposed structure. And that's kind of a basic summary of the project. As outlined in the Cow memo, the applications required would be rezoning from R1A and R2B. There's two different residential zoning districts on the site to OR2. That would be required to establish the proposed commercial use on the site. It doesn't really pertain to the size of the building because that's governed by the built form overlay, the corridor for district that's in place today. So that would enable the applicant to implement that commercial use along 50th Street West. And then a variance to reduce the minimum yard setback as we went over from nine feet to five feet along the rear facing the alley. And then the Site Plan Review application. And then they would be applying for administrative increases to the height to go from four stories, 56 feet, to five stories, 58 feet. And then an administrative FAR increase from 2 to 2.8. And I'll let the applicant touch on which premiums they intend to apply for to achieve those, but I believe it would be enclosed parking and the affordable housing, inclusionary zoning premiums. And then they'll be required to comply with a minor travel demand management plan for four points. So I've outlined some of the applicable policies in the plan. But I will pause there. I can take questions, or I know that the applicant has some materials to share as well.
Peter, I have a question for you, actually. So why would they get a bonus for doing the IZ when that's already required?
So they would get a bonus for locating subsidized affordable units on-site. There's a number of different options for implementing the IZ ordinance, including in-lu payment, so paying a fee rather than implementing actual units, producing units off-site. And so that is an incentive to get projects to implement affordable units where they are building a project, incorporating them within the mix of other units on-site. So that's the premium.
Are there any other questions for Peter? All right, seeing none, I will open up to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, Peter. My name is Ben Patachik, and I'm going to present on behalf of DJR, the architect for this project, and I'll share my screen. First, I wanted to answer a few of the items Peter brought up. He had mentioned that the plans look like we were following the established setbacks on 50th and Beard, and that's correct. We are intending to follow those established setbacks as they're shown on the plans. I'm going to talk a little bit about our approach to the design of the building, starting with some precedent images of brick detail, both in historic Minneapolis buildings and also some buildings that have reinterpreted historic brick detail in their design. And this is something we wanted to implement, especially on the 50th side, where we'd have commercial use to kind of invoke that feel of a historic Minneapolis brick storefront. And this is something that wasn't included in our original package, but we're starting to show some of that detail along 50th and then wrapping the corner around Beard, mainly in the front portion of this building to add some interest above and along the commercial storefront and some of the amenity spaces in the northwest corner of the site. Our approach on Beard Avenue was to relate the building more to the neighborhood context with these walkout units and having some taller bay windows above those, which creates an alcove at the main entry of the residential lobby, but also at each of the walkout units. And I'll skip ahead to one of our images that I think shows that a little bit more in detail. Here's an example of one of those walkout units. I do want to address the blank facades. Our plan for that is to include windows along the garage so that we don't have any spans larger than 25 feet along that. So we've, since our original package, we've added windows at that first story and also are proposing some canopies above the garage doors to give some articulation along each of those sides. We've also added another storefront window around the corner on the east side of that commercial space. And then these elevations also show some of that brick detail that we're proposing in the commercial space and continuing around the amenities and are looking for some feedback on that from the commission. And here are the views again. I do want to talk a bit about the variance we're asking for on the east side. So the portion of the building that rises to five stories is 10 feet back from the property line at the alley on the east side. And so the only portion that would be within the nine feet would be the one-story portion of the garage in that area, which would only be one level. And some of the difficulties on-site, we've identified and reasoning for having this, asking for this variance is because of the grade change on the site varies about seven feet from the north side of the site to the south side of the site. So in order to make those entrances work along the alley to, and I can show that elevation, in order to get that, it helps to have that garage go into that setback a bit as much as possible so that we can work with the grade there. And then also that allows us to get good-sized units facing Beard Avenue, where we have the four walkout units. The premiums, Peter was correct. We identified enclosed parking as a premium for increased FAR and height and having the affordable on-site. And if needed, a potential third premium would be 60% of the facade along 50th would be commercial use. And then finally, Peter talked about this a little bit, but I just want to talk about our strategies for fitting into the neighborhood context. We setback the building as much as possible. So the fifth story is completely setback from both street sides. So 50th and Beard, you can see it up here, setback with some penthouse patios up on that level. We have inset balconies on the 50th side as well. And then some building variation that I already talked about on the Beard side with these large bay windows. There's additional setbacks of the building on the upper story on the east side facing the alley, definitely at the garage, where it's only one story above the enclosed garage. But then again, at the fifth story. And then here in this view, you can see again that setback at the fifth story and then the setback above the garage. And with that, I'll hand it back to the committee and ask if you have any questions for the applicant.
Great. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicants? Oh, I see Commissioner Olson does.
Thanks. I'm wondering if you can talk about why you chose to put the commercial space next to the alley instead of on the corner?
Yeah. So some reasons for that are just how the building lays out. With, we have, you know, the residential facing Beard Avenue. So it made sense to have the main entry to the residential area on Beard Avenue. And then some of those amenity spaces prominent on the corner of the building. And then we, you know, we did want the commercial on 50th, and I think that would be required. And it also allows access directly from the commercial spaces to some designated parking spots in that enclosed parking area. Sheldon, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that captures it. It's as much about giving good visibility on 50th. Some proximity, just from a functional standpoint, to that parking and service that would support the commercial space and some visibility for the amenity areas and things. Whereas if it had been reversed, then we would have orphaned, you know, potentially some of those either amenity spaces or we wouldn't necessarily want residential spaces regularly on 50th. So that's part of the rationale. And, you know, by the fenestration and the makeup of the building, you know, you know, it does read sort of continuously as a more commercial, open, transparent, you know, treatment of that base at the pedestrian level. So you get that continuity as well, so.
Okay. Thanks. I guess overall, I'd just say that I like the design, I like the materials. I think that the variance and the rezoning are supportable, and I like the access to the bike room from the exterior. So I hope that stays. Thanks.
Commissioner Rainville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. See, I just, I have a request from the council member whose ward this is in, Laney Palmisano. And it would be great if someone could reach out to her to discuss this project with her. So I wanted to pass that on. I don't know which one of you gentlemen would be the appropriate one, but.
Right. Yep. That we are planning to do in conjunction with the development group as well. So that is already being planned. So I appreciate you sharing that request. And we plan to be doing that and also setting up some, you know, meeting with the neighborhood as well, so.
Thank you. I'll let Laney know that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, I have a few. So seeing none, we'll go ahead. I really like that you guys added some visual interest, that kind of heralded that older feel with that brick that you guys are doing there. I think we've been asking so many times from developers to be adding some interesting visual interest. We've seen this building a million times right now in Minneapolis. So I really do appreciate that kind of added effort to do that. I think we're seeing some really interesting things happen on this 50th and France corridor with, you know, stepping, things that other developers are doing in this, in architecture doing in this area, which is kind of making this have a very unique footprint. I think even if, you know, I don't know if your fourth floor could step back to a degree to kind of add to that. I'm not sure if you've seen what Snowkry like did or some of the other developers kind of that are building right around here, just to kind of, I don't know, there's a new, like a vibe that's happening that we've been seeing that I feel like this project is a little bit different from in, you know, same-ness type way, that, I don't know, just something to think about. I also wonder if there's any way to use some of those architectural elements of the church that's being torn down? Can you reuse any of the brick or do something cool in the community space with it? If there's some stained glass or if that, like the big window, the circular window, if that's able to be repurposed in this project in some way or something? Kind of, I mean, you know, people have been walking by the church for 100 years, reminding them that this is still that community and where they live. I think there could be some historic way to kind of tie that back together. I'll let you answer some of those questions before I go on.
Yeah, I think we can certainly explore some of the reuse of some elements from the church, whether, you know, at many different levels between, you know, whether it's the ground level or some other upper lever, excuse me, upper level elements. I think there's some opportunities there. I guess, thank you for the comment about appreciating some of setbacks and things. It's a very intentional piece of the project and the design. Could you clarify a little bit about? I don't know if I got two of your comments, you know, sort of superimposed of each other, but you were talking about the setbacks, but also like third, no, third or fourth floor setbacks? Were you talking about additional setbacks?
Yeah, there's, we've seen two or three different projects come through right now in the same area where they're doing some kind of very cool architectural stepping of the upper floors to kind of mask and feel a little bit less large, too. Snowkry likes one of them that I'm sure you've looked at. And who, one of the Commissioners might be able to chime in on who's the other one that had that kind of very cool structure that we saw also that's around 50th and France. But there's a lot of, you know, I feel like they're doing these ways to integrate these into the neighborhood and into 50th and France to have a little bit of a different feel than what we, you know, I live in the north, a lot of this type of building. I would just kind of, while if you're thinking about it, kind of in the context of these four new buildings opening in the next, you know, three years, if they're all kind of having an interesting architectural moment, maybe add some of that element. Because I think it's something different that we haven't seen before, which I think is cool happening there. And yeah, then my other comment was about the historic brick or window preservation.
Right, right.
That you answered. So I think that would be great. And then my last question was about the size of the commercial space. How big are those different bays going to be?
The individual storefront bays? Let's see, the total square footage is now around 1,700 square feet for the commercial space. And so I would imagine those bays are, I don't know, what, 14, 15 feet each? If you sort of go from center of brick to center of brick. If you sort of go center of brick to center of brick with the glass maybe being twelve or thirteen feet wide, is that about right, Ben?
Yeah, that's right, Sheldon.
So how much total square foot for the smaller bay would be?
Oh, so, well, I mean, if we're talking about fenestration, you know, it's twelve or thirteen feet of, you know, gla, well, of glass and then, you know, brick here, whatever. And if you're talking about a bay of the commercial, you know, potentially it's a single user, but it might also be a pair of smaller uses, I think is a possibility.
So the.
It could be, it could be like, pardon?
The seventeen hundred square foot space not to be subdivided right now, the plan is.
It could be. I think there's the opportunity if, you know, those type of tenants come forward. I think we've thought about that potential, and we'll keep that as an option. I think it's very likely that we might get somebody for the sixteen hundred square feet with, you know, having that much visibility for that square footage is, you know, obviously great for a lot of different uses, so.
Yeah, I would also just be, I think on this corridor, it could be really need to have these be smaller spaces. We've seen come through with, you know, ways to have smaller walk-up window coffee shops and things that don't necessarily need a giant footprint and be able to have more entrepreneurial type businesses in those spaces. So I would also, I think, kind of given the corridor, I mean, if you think of something like, I was picturing kind of how you, you know, the street's kind of like, I want to think of Thirty-Sixth, where like Bogart's is, how you can kind of walk up and it doesn't, there's a lot of those, you know, smaller type businesses could be kind of neat on this thoroughfare that it's not at exactly Fiftieth and France, you know. Something like that, that I think if you could have smaller scale ones would be great, too. Maybe a bathroom built in, so then you can get away from the whole issue of where is the bathroom? But maybe something that could work, too, with this frontage.
Yeah, I would just add, Sheldon, that the intent with the design is that if it's one or more spaces, it could be broken up easily with how the storefronts are subdivided on that elevation.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, if there's a way to, if you are going to go down that path, just, you know, obviously having one shared bathroom for the commercial tenants would be great, and then have other people being able to subdivide, because I think we don't see a frontage like that that often that can kind of actually do that and activate it in a lot of different ways, too.
Sure.
Okay, those are my comments. I'll open it up to the commission again to, on the feedback that was requested around the rear yard variance. The blank wall, which I guess you guys are addressing with the windows, so that should not be an issue. And then the building design and context, if anyone else has any other comments. All right, seeing no other comments from the commission. And with that, I will direct the clerk to receive and file that item. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
That concludes all of our discussion items on this agenda. Are there any staff updates for this evening?
No updates this evening.
Awesome. That, with that, we've completed all the items on this agenda for the meeting tonight. I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. Not and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, April eleventh, 2022, and our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, April fourteenth, 2022. Did it, thirty minutes, almost.
Good job. Good night.
All right, good night, guys. Thank you.